Yep. We're ready, we're recording, ready to rock.
It went off.
To deal with roof project. Going for contract tonight. And this is the second part. Being awarded breakout project. So. Been approved at work. Next week, probably Wednesday or Thursday.
What do you know?
Tonight, I'm reporting major project. Plus, additional saving. Yeah. Get into the finance. Right now. People. Good for the record.
Who are Tom Clark?
Yeah.
Jay Ressler. Kathy Dedano. Joe Attenazio.
Here.
Bob Brown. Surjit Sandhu. And Karen Schoenberg.
Doing two, one, three, eight, five, nine, thirty-one, forty-two. Winthrop Road. Seven, six, seven, three.
Seventy-seven, seventy-one, ninety-six, and one-ten. For your information, fifty-three and fifty-seven are the additional buildings we were able to include as this phase with the savings that was garnished by using this contractor in the process we used to getting to the bottom dollar. The contract does include stipulation because, as we said in the first part of the award that we did two weeks ago, that we were going to wait until work was completed on forty-eight to use that as a model to make sure that it was to the standards that the board was looking for. But since we're running out of time to get this work done, I mean, October is coming quickly, the days are getting shorter, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. We'll probably be working on this project going into November. We have to really wrap this thing up before the really bad weather comes in. So, in order for us to be able to do that, we're going to have this contract awarded tonight with the stipulation, and this is agreed upon with the contractor. This is acceptance and approval of this proposal may be voided by the Whittingham Homeowners Association if not satisfied with the work after completion on forty-eight Winthrop Road. According to the agreed details, the existing signed contract. Also, after completion of forty-eight Winthrop Road, the job must pass inspection by Owen Corning along with certificate of platinum protection extending lifetime fifty-year warranty. That's all been agreed to by the contractor. So this award tonight for this contract will be done with those stipulations in place.
Can you fix this?
What?
But anyway, I would like to go into some of the details of the contract and how we're saving this much money. Kathy will speak to that, and then at that point, after Kathy has concluded her information, I will open it up to the public for any questions that you may have. Kathy, could you please go into some of the details on the financing?
Okay, I'd like to make this as simple as we could, but we will answer any questions. And of course, the contract will be available if anyone wants to review the finer details. So this contract for these buildings will classify buildings and then number of homes. So this will be a total of fifteen buildings, and a building we're classifying as a group of homes. That will be a total of sixty-nine homes. Okay, those that Tom just listed will cost the association one million, two-hundred-and-four-thousand-two-hundred dollars. That includes the replacement of the roof using Owen Corning's True Definition shingle guaranteed for fifty years. In addition to that, it will include dual flue chimney housings and all the B vents, what are called furnace heater pipes that extend from out of the roof. Those will be replaced with stainless steel materials. In addition to that, there will be a collar and cap that goes on the chimney in stainless steel also. Something that we've never done before, we have used galvanized steel in the past. We have found that it rusted away, this is probably the better way to go, this is definitely the better way to go. The only cost over and above this one million, two-hundred-and-four-thousand-two-hundred is the cost of any plywood that may be needed, and generally speaking, we hope not to have much of that. But each home will receive three pieces, hundred-and-eighty-five in total, pieces of plywood free. Each home, three pieces, anything over that will be an additional cost to us. That is the only additional cost that we are aware of and are anticipating. In comparison, I just want to point out, we had gotten another proposal, and just for the purposes of comparison, so that we understand the significant savings that this vendor has given us, I'm just going to read off the similar project. Now, the other vendor did include some additional items that we decided were not necessary at this time because we're going to do them at a later date. So comparable, just comparing comparable numbers, this project would have cost us one million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand in comparison to the one million, two-oh-four. Okay, well, I would rather not give out the name of the company. I think that is the right thing to do, it's just another proposal. It would be basically a company that is known to us, but again, that price was significantly higher. We're looking at five-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars higher than what we are being given with Beyonddo. So if there are any questions, certainly we can answer those, we can make an attempt.
I also just wanted to make the point to the plywood that's being given, a hundred-and-eighty-five sheets. The last time we did re-roofing, we paid for the plywood from the first sheet on. So the first hundred-and-eighty-five, if needed, will be free. That's a savings of over eleven thousand dollars in that alone. Not by having an engineer firm manage and the bidding and the contract, probably saves us close to another hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. And other managerial costs that were in the past would have added another ten percent. So this price is significantly lower than it has been. I mean, it's a wonderful opportunity for us, and we're getting a lot more of the work done. These homes need to be re-roofed, that's why we're here, and we're going to hopefully get it all complete before the bad weather comes in. So time is of the essence with this roofer, that's why we're doing what we're doing today at a special meeting. So, any other board member have anything else to say? Go ahead.
Just want to add, these homes were chosen by our engineer as the homes that needed concern care immediately. Either they had existing leaks, damage, and so on. So these were not chosen by the board, these were chosen by an engineer who did a thorough analysis of every home in the community and decided that these were the first that needed to be addressed.
Yeah, I just want to add that the specification was prepared by FWH. They are the same people who did our original specifications for the first phase in twenty-twenty-two. It's apples to apples, if anything, instead of galvanized, we are getting stainless. And, you know, we should not have, look at these B vents in most of the homes, in what kind of bad shape they are. With the stainless, you know, we want to make that problem go away. Again, the specification is exactly the same, they are going to be done with the same process, same procedures. You know, when it comes to ice shielding, water vapor shielding, proper flashing, you name it. So I just want to get the point across that it's the same quality. You know the reason why we are saving the money? We are cutting the middle people out. We're dealing with the owner. You think KPI did this without any markup? You think FWH did the supervision without charging us anything, they were charging eight percent? I don't know how much KPI's markup was. So when you eliminate the middle people, that money is in our pocket. And we are going to get a better quality, same materials, for a much cheaper price, just as Kathy explained to you. Any question, please talk to us, we spend a lot of time.
Hold on, hold on, we're not done yet, board, I'm not done. Any other board member have any comments to make on this contract? Okay, seeing none, I'll open it up to the public.
Sandra Cohen, nine Winthrop Road, the place is packed. I know, well, because first of all, the agenda, there was no agenda, so nobody knew what you were going to talk about. It just said the two things. So if we have a meeting, like people, I don't know, I can't even imagine.
It's a special meeting, that's why.
Well, you know why also, because people don't like when you were screaming, not you, but people were screaming at me at the other meeting. They were very turned off, very, very turned off. So a lot of people, especially women who are by themselves, I have a list of grievances from women who are afraid to come here to talk because they don't want people in the audience screaming at them. I don't know if I'm allowed to do that. I don't know, am I talking? My question is, so.
Talk into the mic, please, they can't hear you on Zoom.
My question is.
Please ask your question.
Yeah, if so many questions. So they're charging us so much less because we're not dealing with the middleman, is that?
Well, that's some of the reason, yes, that's some, that's some of the reason. That's not the only reason, but that's some of it, yes.
So what are your plans for that million-dollar, whatever it is savings, you have plans for that? Is it going to be for the next phase?
No, well, first of all, we, first of all.
I'm not asking you that.
First, the estimate.
The president of the board.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, there's two conversations here. First of all, the estimate came in for well over two million dollars. We don't have two million dollars in comp to do this.
Right.
So we were only going to go with what we had. So we were able to spend what we had, still being able to do the over two million dollars worth of work because of the cost savings, and there was so much of a cost savings, we were able to add on another ten units.
That's great.
So, I mean, so a lot more is going to be done, and that's how we accomplished it.
And the person who was supervising this is Owen Corning is supervising?
Well, he, they supervise and oversee the contract to Beyonddo because they are the ones who will issue us the fifty-year warranty.
So, but they're doing the fifty-year warranty for the roofing? Who's doing the rest of the work is being done by Beyonddo?
Beyonddo, correct.
Who is supervising them? Owen's Corning?
Which work are we talking about, the chimneys?
Whatever else is left.
Yeah, that's all being, that's all being managed by Beyonddo.
And who is supervising them, is anybody supervising them?
His own people, I mean, the manager, the owner of the place, we're going to supervise it.
Oh, so you don't have any, in other words, there's no outside person making sure what they're doing is right? I'm just, it's a question that somebody asked me to ask you.
Yeah, this is a pretty straightforward project.
Oh, I'm just asking.
Okay.
Yes, Kathy?
I was just going to say, when we individually get our own roof, we supervise, we, we, our own home supervise the work. We don't know as in, I mean, we're not engineers, so we look and we see and we hope basically that these people are giving us a product that is deserved. What they do is they send their senior people to, so Sam Beyonddo, who is the senior person for this company, he's the owner. He will supervise his employees, he will ensure that the work is done satisfactorily.
Is that the company who did Clearbrook that you spoke about? Because I remember I wrote that down, Clearbrook, yes. Listen again, so, okay, so that's going to be done, okay, thank you. Can I bring, not now, but at the point in time, I have these things from other people who are very resident to come.
The only thing we're speaking about, because it's a special meeting, is what's on the agenda tonight. This is not like a regular open meeting, this is just a special on these two items that.
Oh, just on the two items?
Two items, that's it, it's a special meeting, it says it right on the agenda.
Hi, hello. Cheryl Staff, nineteen Winthrop. I'm excited that we're in our, in the second phase of this beautiful project. I have two questions. Number one, how long does it usually take for the roofs to be finished per house?
From what we know, on the breakout project is about to happen, on a three-unit, it should be, it should take about two and a half days.
For three?
For three.
Okay, we're three units, so that's good to know. The other thing is my concern being in the second part, what if the weather gets bad? Are we still being like thrown into the spring, does this, will this continue?
All this work should be completed before, yeah, it should be all completed, I've asked that question, he says there'll be no problem. They'll probably wrap this thing up sometime at the beginning of November, hopefully. As long as we don't get bad weather, we don't get a week of rain and all that kind of stuff. I mean, we're reliant on good weather to work, so, yeah, it, they pretty much have this down to a science. The thing that's going to take him the most time is constructing the chimneys. That's what takes the most time, the roof, they knock it right out. They have it down to a science with the air guns today.
Okay.
The construction of the chimney, that takes a little bit more time.
Well, we appreciate that it's going to be done, thank you.
Anyone else in the public want to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, I will close the public portion, and I will then turn it over to the board. Have a motion to move this Beyonddo construction contract? Kathy moved it, and Surjit seconded it, okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Tom Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Dedano? Jay Ressler? Joe Attenazio?
Yes.
Bob Brown? Surjit Sandhu? Everybody loud into the mic.
All right, let's just move on to the next item on the agenda, ice machine replacement. We have a contract for a total of nine thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents, an award to a, to Coastal Refrigeration Corp. For a replacement of the ice machine that we've had for years, that's used by just about every club that's here when they're using this place for a function. The old one just, just, just got to the end, so it was time for a replacement. We did a little shopping around, we saved a few thousand dollars by shopping around, picking up this equipment. So we're all very well satisfied, we're looking to get this done, so all these clubs don't have to carry all this heavy ice in that they've been doing for the last month or so. So this is what the contract's for, is the replacement of the ice machine. And so do I have any, anyone on the board want to make comment on this?
I just want to comment that the ice machine is used by the restaurant and also by clubs within the community. And so it was important to make sure that we replaced it with a comparable unit. We did do some research and did discover that Hoshizaki, which I never heard of, but that is the number one ice machine by several review sites. So we decided we would go with that machine.
Anyone else on the board? Anyone from the public want to make comment on this? Yes, man, you got to come up to the microphone, otherwise we can't register you what you're saying.
Donna Fox, Six Westminster, where is the ice machine?
The ice machine is in, it's in what's known as the kitchen area of the restaurant.
Do you have access to it?
We do have access, we do have access right now because there's no one in there, we can walk in through it. But when the restaurant becomes operated again, the concierge will walk whatever club that needs ice into it, and you can get all the ice you want. No, personally? No. No, this is for use for the clubs, this is enough for personal use. Anyone else have anything to say on this contract? All right, seeing none, I will close the public portion, and I will call for a motion. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Kathy moved it, Joe will second it, okay, Mac, can I have a roll call, please?
Sure, Tom Clark?
Yes.
Jay Ressler? Joe Attenazio?
Yes.
Bob Brown? Kathy Dedano? And Surjit Sandhu?
Okay, seeing we have no other business on the agenda, I will entertain an adjournment. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? Okay, do we have any questions from Zoom before we do that?
Not about the roofs, I think I answered them, a couple of residents wanted me to put the addresses in that you mentioned, so I put that in the chat already. And the only last one is, is the ice machine available for everyone to use? Yeah, pretty much, but when the restaurant opens, I think we said, clubs. Yeah, clubs.
Yeah, that's always been the policy. Yeah, it's not individual use, it's for clubs, it's for use in the building. Anything else, anything else, Matt?
It on Zoom right now.
Okay. So I had a motion and a second, you have anything else to say? Okay, yeah, good point. As everyone knows, before we take that vote to adjourn, I want to remind everyone that there's an election coming up. The last day is October seventh. Everyone has gotten emails, and it's split this year, as you know, there's as many as three emails depending on where you live. But the contest is in the Whittingham section, and the people who live in Whittingham definitely have to pay attention to their emails, please respond. The return rate has been very, very low, and we have to be able to make quorum, otherwise we don't have a valid election. So we're, we're not, we're not there yet, and I want to not have to do this over again because that will cost a lot of money, and we don't want to spend the money, we want to get this done. But you should be checking your email boxes. If you don't have an email, you don't have a computer, as you know, if you're listening to me, maybe through some means, you can come down to the building, we can get you a ballot on paper, and you can vote that way. But please, you must vote, it's very important, so I encourage everyone not to forget to vote. Yeah, all right, is this on the voting? Yeah, all right.
So a lot of people don't have a computer, there are many people who don't drive to get here, to get that mail-in thing. So what could the board do to make it easier?
I'll take that, Tom, I mean, we already hand-delivered ballots to all the people without email addresses in our system, so we have them covered because everyone needs the opportunity to vote, so we take that extra step.
All right, okay.
I want to add something, I want to be clear, for, I don't know how many people are on Zoom, but I want to be very clear. Greenbrier residents, and I'm just mentioning it here because of the purposes, they will also vote for WOAA members. So I want to be clear to all Greenbrier members, and then I'll go to Whittingham. All Greenbrier members will receive three emails. They will vote in the first email for Greenbrier candidates. In the second email, they will vote for WOAA seats A and B. And the third email, they will, they will vote for WOAA seats C and D. Now, on the Whittingham side, they're going to get two emails. They're going to vote for seats A and B, one email, and the second email, seats C and D. So please, if you. So please, if you vote once, you have to look for the remaining emails and vote again for the other seats. I wanted to make that clear.
Anyone else on, on this subject? All right, we already made a motion and was seconded, all right, Matt, can I have a roll call, please, on adjournment?
Yep, the loud guy will talk again. Tom Clark?
Yes.
Jay Ressler? Joe Attenazio?
Sure, yes.
Bob Brown? Kathy Dedano? Sergeet Sandu? Thanks.
All right, thank you all for coming, thank you.
This meeting over.